Two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred, sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Bill Warren.
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Warren, twenty-three oh nine, in the amount of six hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred three dollars and twenty-two cents, which breaks down to the town of thirty thousand, seven hundred eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Water and sewer, nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and three cents. Annual town meeting transfers, one hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Payroll withholding, forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Light bills, four hundred twelve thousand, one dollar and fifty cents. Grants revolving, eight thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Appointments of the board? We didn't have any votes of the board. Special permit application, Congregational Church for a yard sale. Perry Park, September tenth, seven to two.
I'll make a motion
Go ahead.
To approve the special event permit for Groveland Congressional Church for September tenth, twenty-twenty-two, in Perry Park, for Saturday at seven a.m. to Saturday at two p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Property use permit application, Salter Transportation, school bus parking to Town Hall Complex. And we have the paperwork on that. They want to use, they want to use the
I don't have an internet connection here.
Line of fire station to park some of the Salter Transportation buses. Didn't say how many.
So they're parking them at the Town Hall, like back, like back here where we'd seen them before?
Correct.
So if they're here, do we collect their excise tax?
I asked if they would be present and answer any questions, and they did not respond.
Because I thought that's, that's how it works, wherever you house the vehicle.
They did that, they parked out there last year.
But do they pay the excise tax to us then, because it's housed here in Groveland? The vehicle?
Uh, no, uh, they didn't.
I think
And I don't know where they're, uh, I don't know where they're registered out of.
Well, I think it's where the vehicle is
Garaged.
Yeah, garaged.
Are they exempt in any way? Is there such a thing? If they pay.
Well, Mello used to keep all their trash trucks up there at, um, off of School Street, right? Or Salem, is it Salem or School at that point? I thought it was where the vehicles are capped, that's who you pay the excise to.
Yeah, it's where they, it should be where they're garaged. And
So, sure, they can park them here, as long as we get the excise tax. Thank you. I mean, if that's what's
If you remember last year, they, uh, last year, the year before, they did, uh, they parked at across from, uh, the Old Town Hall, the corner of Gardner and Main Street. On Gardner School Street.
Okay.
All right, is there a, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, oh boy, I'm always
Approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the property use permit for the Salter Transportation at, um, the Town Hall Complex for the school year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
A friendly amendment, that we determine the, um, status of the excise tax on those vehicles, if there is, if there is excise tax being paid?
That we're entitled to it.
Yes. Can we determine that, like, do the assessor?
Real quick question.
Go ahead.
If, if we're going to do it for these three here, obviously, there's three more down at the
Exactly.
You know, well, water department now, and then one at the highway garage, so.
Yep.
And, um, you can also
Go for it all.
Yep.
Well, and, and then you've got the, uh, the trash trucks up on Route ninety-seven, you've got the Georgetown school buses, uh, up on ninety-seven. I don't know who owns that property, Valley, Neil Valley Tree. And they're all in place for the opening of school.
So do you
But all right, it's, it's before, uh, it's before us, the property use application, uh, with the friendly amendment.
Did you accept the friendly amendment, Jason?
Yeah, he, he said that was fine.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, uh, any further discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. One-day liquor license. Gillian Anofsky. And this would be for Beezy Park Retirement Party on September tenth, two to eight p.m. And she submitted the proper paperwork for that.
I am unable to open this.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Gillian Anofsky for Beezy Park for September tenth, twenty-twenty-two, between two and eight p.m.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. One-day liquor license, Stephanie D'Angelo Masia for an event, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, three to eight p.m. And I think that is I don't see the paperwork on it. Do we have that?
Yes. I just can't get it to download. Just a second. I have it, D'Angelo, I just can't get it to download. Yes, here we go, there.
I'll combine with it.
So it's nine twenty-four, twenty-two, three to eight p.m., it's the wedding for a hundred people. They're giving away alcohol, a one-day beer and wine license. There's no name for the caterer. Should that be filled in? And no admission charges, a wedding.
Is it Josie's?
This is Stephanie D'Angelo and Mas, Masia, C, M.A.S.C.I.A. Forty-nine, Christine Lane, Haverhill, Massachusetts. Three to eight p.m.
Yeah, it looks like the proper paperwork is here.
I just have one page.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Oh no, I have more pages, sorry, I have more pages.
It's Josie's.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, I just got to, it was downloading slow, sorry about that.
Now, is there a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion, second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, to approve one-day liquor license, September twenty-fourth, three p.m. to eight p.m. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. Accept the resignation of Sherri Sabines as the library assistant from the Groveland Langley Adams Library. And we have, uh, we have the resignation letter from, from her through the library director. Is, is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Sherri Sabines as the library assistant.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None, all in favor? In unanimous. And next, we have community, community trail agreements.
Mr. Chair, so I added that to the agenda because we were contacted by National Grid. It lays out some outstanding items for the community trail, now that we're almost set to open, hopefully this year. So the two outstanding documents are the effective date of agreement and the notice of lease. Town Council has reviewed both of these documents and has okayed them, and they are here for your signature this evening.
Okay, and we need to, we need to sign that paperwork?
Please.
And you have that here?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we need a motion on that?
So what is, I don't have the document, what's the motion that's necessary?
It's just honestly a one-page document, noticing that the effective date of the lease and that you're agreeing to the agreement.
No, we just need to sign, I don't think we need, I don't think we need a, uh,
Technically, we've already signed the lease.
Okay, well, uh, all right, we don't need a motion.
So we've already, we've already agreed to all this?
Essentially, but those are the final documents National Grid doesn't have on file that need to be enclosed as exhibits to the lease.
Okay. So we're saying we don't, you want to look at this, do you think we need a motion on that?
No, we already
Already been executed.
Already took care of that. Well, we can, you know, we can do a motion if you want. And sign the, uh, sign the agreement, community trail agreement. We'll take a motion, uh, sign the community trail agreement, I'm not sure that we need it, but
It's just with National Grid, right?
It, uh, what's that?
It's with, just with National Grid?
National Grid, correct.
So National Grid wants it on their file?
Yeah. Okay, well, whatever. Yeah, I don't think we need a vote on it. Moving on.
Okay.
We'll just sign it, we'll sign that, that's all set. Uh, zoning board of appeals member disclosure, we have, uh, we have the disclosure, conflict of interest disclosure from Brad Legos, from the zoning board of appeals, and he's filed the proper paperwork, he'll be, uh, looks like, uh, he provides a service to Cedar Dell. Looks like they're looking for a, a cell tower on the property. And that could go before the zoning board.
I have a question about that.
Yep.
I don't know how large of a client Cedar Dell is to his. And I do believe in his last statement that, uh, he made the statement that he would be, he feels that he can perform his official duties objectively and fairly, which I don't disagree with. But an appearance, for appearance, wouldn't it be easier just to appoint, uh, an alternate for this vote? For the ZBA? Because then there would be no appearance of any conflict at all.
Because he has a business relationship with them.
With Cedar Dell, yeah.
Yeah, for sixteen years, that would be the easier path, I would say.
I believe he is the alternate member.
It's
Oh gee.
Cedar Dell's not the applicant.
So he, his vote wouldn't be required?
If there was a quorum, but I'll, I think the problem is, is there not going to be a quorum. And that's why he's going to have to be the one to vote. But could we just appoint an additional, um, like, one of the members of the boards here to stand in for the alternate for this vote here? Wouldn't be a problem on that, right?
Since he is the alternate member and has a conflict or an appearance of a conflict.
I think that'd probably be a good idea.
No, that's your, that's your choice.
What do you think, Mark, you want to sit on the ZBA meeting and, uh?
Sure.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Mark Pronto as a alternate for the ZBA for, uh, the meeting in regards to the cell tower at Cedar Dell.
So we don't know when the meeting is, we don't have a date yet?
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, to appoint Mark to deal with this zoning board issue. All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
Discussion?
Oh yeah, all right, go ahead, discussion.
Well, um, I appreciate, uh, um, I think you earn on the side of caution, uh, I hear what, um, um, what you're saying, but I think it should be noted for the record that, um, Brad stated that, um, he felt he could perform, uh, the official duties objectively and fairly, so. And I, I, I believe he could. So in no way, uh, do I want anyone to misconstrue, uh, what we do here. So I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but I, I don't want it
No.
in any way to be a reflection on him, we just decided to go in a different direction.
I agree, I thi, I think he would, um, he certainly, he certainly would do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, he said he's, he's not an, he's a one of five members, so they would still have a quorum even without us appointing another member. So the only event in which Mark would really have to vote would be if they go two to two. You know, so.
I believe the, the, the members have already stated they wouldn't be able to make the meeting. And that's why they're, they were looking for the alternate to step in.
Point of clarity, he says he's a member, did he mean to say, is it, is he in fact an, uh, an alternate member, or is he a
Says he's a
one of the five members?
But it seems to say here that he's one of the five members on the disclosure form.
I thought he was a member.
Right.
Does that matter?
Well, what I'm saying is that if they have all five members, the quorum is three.
Okay, but if he's a full-fledged member, he's not an alternate. If there is an alternate, then that person would move up, and then we don't need
Oh, yes, of course.
You with me?
Yes, I'm following you now.
That's why we have alternates, so I, I don't know what the, the makeup of the ZBA is, but I certainly don't want to
I agree.
set aside an alternate if one is in place. That we know. Thank you. Sorry to be a pest.
Now, what's your pleasure?
We're just checking to see, we're waiting to see who's on the ZBA, if you could pause for a moment. You said an invalid question. I'm trying to find that note, why were you approved people to the I can look to it, let me see. It's going to be way back. Oh, I don't have them that far back. Um, wait a minute, I might have them. Um, I have one other place.
Mr. Chair, should we circle back?
So, um, I don't believe he is the alternate, I think he is, uh, the most recent one is John Grohl. But yes, we can circle back.
Can't find it?
Yeah, Brad is a member.
Yeah, I think he is, and John Grohl is the alternate member. I just can't find the letter.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So if the alternate's not available, then
The, uh, yeah, and I, I believe according to the email from Annie, John and, and, um, Chris will not be available.
Oh.
Oh, that's news.
Or, John won't be available, and it's, and it's going to be me, um, Brad, and Chris Goodwin. And so we would need, and John won't be available, so we'll need somebody to fill in for
We need a fifth wheel. Okay, Mr. Chair, move the question, I guess.
Okay, before us, to appoint Mark. And, uh, there's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? None, all in favor? Four in favor, one abstained. Discussion impossible vote. Opera project discussion, Board of Health request. And we have a letter from Chair, Chairman of the Board of Health. And, Jason, you want to read that?
Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, it has recently been brought to the Board of Health's attention that an error occurred on the FY twenty-twenty-three line item for the public health nurse annual salary on the warrant presented to town meeting on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. This has resulted in a two thousand, six hundred, thirty-five dollar and eighty cent deficit in the public health nurse annual salary. We understand this will be corrected at the next town meeting with a detailed explanation. We are requesting the use of opera funds to be applied to correct the deficit. The public health nurse activities are ongoing, COVID-nineteen monitoring and surveillance. Continue along with the public education and services, and therefore would qualify as an allowable expense. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Deborah Hall.
Okay, what's your, uh, what's your
I'm still off one again.
No, no, I don't, I don't know that that's, uh, would be a proper use of the opera funds. I mean, wouldn't, uh, the transfers that we do towards the end of the year be more appropriate?
Yes, as, as of May tenth, is it?
Yes.
As of May tenth, we can make line item transfers within, uh, within departments.
So her salary will deplete in January.
Oh, well, that won't work then. Um, we could do a, um, reserve fund transfer, I mean, was it an oversight at the town meeting?
They had based their budget numbers on the last town meeting warrant.
Right, so they miscalculated.
The special meeting that we had in December.
Yeah, so the town meeting voted a miscalculated number, uh, too, too small a number.
Well, no, the Board of Health requested additional hours for the nurse in December.
Right, up to ten hours a week.
Exactly, so the additional monies were allocated through the special town meeting, and when they submitted their budget, they did not take into consideration those additional monies, they based the figure off of what was approved at the town meeting in the spring. So they did a two percent on the spring town meeting warrant allocation, instead of including the additional monies allocated at the December, not taking into consideration that they offered her a higher rate than what they had paid the former public health nurse.
But we paid them the higher rate the prior year? We hired her at the higher rate, is that the higher
The Board of Health hired her at a higher rate.
And they have a higher letter that says that? They gave her a letter that said that?
They gave her a letter, correct.
So they, they contracted for that? And then they didn't budget for it?
They based their numbers off of the annual town meeting, is what they had told me, and not the rate that they offered her. So they based it off of the allocation and not the pay rate.
Okay, so it's not really unforeseen, it's a mistake?
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I ask, what are our options, what are our options?
Yeah.
How many do we have? Could we wait and request the transfer? Are we allowed to say, yes, go ahead and overdraw the account, and we'll catch up later? I mean, what, what's compliant?
You're not necessarily allowed to deficit spend a salary line item, we've run into this in the past, usually what will happen is that by the time we are able to get to that point, we are able to make the transfer in May. We have, um, on certain occasions and under dire circumstances, allowed the account to go in the negative with the understanding that there would be a transfer, but that is not encouraged nor promoted practice. There are no other additional funds to be taken, you can't pay the employee out of an expense line item, it has to be a salary line item. So this is one of the only options available to get the employee the additional funds.
Was there any talk, or do we foresee a special town meeting, uh, later on this year where we could attempt to cure, uh, at that point in time?
We do not foresee a special town meeting. Which would be the only other way to allocate the additional funds outside of the annual.
What you're saying is we can't yet.
Well, unless the board would like to call a special town meeting for this item and/or other items that it was looking at, but
Be a pretty expensive twenty-six-hundred-dollar special town meeting, it might cost us more than twenty-six-hundred to make it happen. So what if we just say no for now, then what is, they're going to run out of money?
They can, they can either run out of money, and they won't have the, the staff, or they could potentially reduce our hours until later in the year. Or there could be monies allocated through American Rescue Fund, or there could be grant funding. Or there could be other ways of trying to find additional monies for the salary.
Can we use the American Rescue Funds?
You can use it.
As a Band-Aid?
You can use it, correct.
Yeah, it's our only option right now to plug the gap, and then we'll have to shift later.
It's all operational expenses, and we're operating under the lost revenue category since we're a small community, and we got under ten million dollars, so any of the expenses we're putting forward are under general government expenses, which is just about anything, and that includes salaries. So I don't think that it's necessary, whether or not they're public health, not public health, whether or not COVID pandemic related, it's general operating expenditure that we're looking for additional assistance with, so I believe that it would qualify irregardless.
And it's two in a
But there wouldn't be any shifting it back, because once it's gone out of there, that's it.
Yeah, but it seems like a, uh, pretty important, critical position, and to let them run out, we can't overdraw it, not allowed to. That was inadvertent, or it was an oversight or an undersight, and so if people make mistakes, okay. I hate to say it's only twenty-six-hundred dollars.
Well, it's a pretty, it's a pretty important position, and to even suggest that, uh, cutting back on the hours, it doesn't make much sense. You're only talking twenty-six-hundred dollars, it, uh, it seems to make sense, and we can, uh, what's, what's my pleasure, I think it makes sense.
I make a motion that we, um, appropriate twenty-six-hundred dollars and change, um, from, um, is it American, what's it called?
American
Relief, rescue?
Yeah.
American relief funds that we have available.
Is there a motion, is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I have discussion.
Go ahead.
So I understand that they, they didn't realize this till after the town meeting. But like, going forward, because they, they, they can hire their own people, and they can set their hourly rates as they choose. We didn't approve the higher hourly rate, they just, they just did it, but then they didn't even put it in the budget properly. So I just would say, I think, um, we need to make sure that somehow this doesn't happen again. Because if they can vote, you know what I mean, they can vote hourly rates on, on, in their meetings. Right? And then if they don't, if we don't see it in the budget, when they give us their budget, we don't know that they've increased the hourly rate, because it looks the same to us, right?
I will say that one of the issues that came across with this particular matter, too, is that it was during the transition phase, so payroll, uh, change forms were submitted, and they were never signed. So they were submitted to the personnel file, and we don't have any signatures on them, so it was during that time of um, that we didn't have a town administrator, we were just going through that process, and then Michelle was into the, new to the office, and she was taking on additional duties in addition to the, what she was doing for the treasurer collector work, so we have the, the payroll change form, we just don't have a signature, so typically, we do have some oversight factor on what's submitted, but in this particular case, there was no oversight as to what was being submitted, or no check or sign off.
So normally, the, the town administrator would sign off on the payroll change form?
The finance director or town administrator, correct.
Okay, that makes me feel better, okay, I'm good.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
How does that information, um, percolate over to the Finance Committee? It seems to me that we have not only the, what used to be Finance Director, but we have, um, Town Administrator now with the change. Does the Finance Committee typically ask for any interim changes so that they don't just do it? What I would surmise is kind of like a cloning error, you know, you take last year's spreadsheet, plus two percent or something. So how do we make sure that anything that happens midstream gets reported to Finance Committee? Seems like it didn't.
It did not, and we have a, um, the town accountant has a, a payroll change sheet in Excel, where you're able to put your pay rate in there, and it shows you what you would get for a weekly payment. Um, and those are usually done at end of year, but we are implementing new policies where those are done every single time you submit a payroll change form, so that everybody is fully aware of what your pay rate will be, and what your weekly salary will be, and what the allocation is, so that we can see and what the allocation is so that we can see whether or not the account has a deficit or there is any issues that will come up.
So going forward, had you signed it or you will now or in the future, right, on the pay rate? And then you will somehow send a copy of that to the Finance Committee so the right hand knows what the left hand's doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, more importantly, I think what you're saying is that they would catch it if they put in a pay rate that we don't have money for. Between the town administrator and the accountant and the treasurer, there was a wait, wait a minute, we don't have the money for this pay rate. So that if... because the Finance Board, they only see things once a year.
I understand.
This is going to happen more often, right?
But it slipped through the cracks because they just worked off the prior year budget, from what you said.
And we didn't have a town administrator. Yeah, or a finance director. We didn't have either, yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? None, I'm ready for a vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Any of us?
Mr. Chair, I did get confirmation. We only have five Zoning Board of Appeals members. We do not have an alternate.
Okay. We vote a mark. We do now.
Mysteries all.
Should we go back and make them permanent?
Not yet.
I'm still not getting anything in here. What is it? Oh, is that it? Okay.
Kentucky, we have a quiet down there.
I'm sorry.
Kentucky Regional School District, Bangal School Plumbing Evaluation. Rebecca, you might have something on that?
So this was requested by Selectman Parento. I did speak with the engineers and they ran the numbers and feel comfortable that the four-inch service will be able to support the entire school. So they're going to work and update the report to list out that as an option so that we have the pricing on that. But the engineer is on vacation, so he's hoping to be able to get that to me by the end of this week, early next week. So I'll have an update on the exact price and a report to share with the Board at the next Selectman meeting.
Okay. Okay, Dan, you had something?
Yeah, I have a question. I was talking with one of the citizens here in town today, actually. Question, is it necessary to replace all the pipes to get the lead out, so to speak? Or is it possible to somehow, some way, add a clean source of water, whether it be the new service or the service in the cafeteria, that we just run plumbing for our water bubblers and drinking source water? Is that possible? Because, and again, forgive me if I'm out there on this, but do we need to replace pipes to say toilets? And, you know, washing your hands in the bathroom sinks. So could we save a boatload of money if we just tapped in the clean water source and just ran it to bubblers? Because I think it's all about ingestion of lead and no other reason. I don't think you can get lead poisoning washing your hands, can you? Or flushing a toilet. So could we save $400,000 or $300,000 or $200,000? So I want to pose the question because someone asked me, well, what are we ripping out all the pipes for? And I said, I don't know. I want to make sure that we have clean drinking water. That's my end game here. And is there a way to do it without ripping out all the pipes?
So that's a valid question and something that we can definitely explore more of. I think that the concern during the conversations with the facilities team as well as the engineer during the beginning of this process is that there is nothing prohibiting you from turning on the sink and grabbing a cup of water and drinking it from those sources. So...
You could put signs up, non-portable. I've seen those. So I think if that saves us $300,000, then that's my two cents on it.
So there's good that as a conversation piece and just whether or not we wanted to make it so that there were multiple sources of clean drinking water because there was no way for them to just take certain pieces of the pipe and then it wasn't the source of the water. The water coming into the building is not lead. It's the actual pipes themselves. So, I mean, we can certainly go back to the engineer and ask him just to run figures that just provide for a two or three potentially drinking water stations for them to go to and just leave the rest of it to be shut off.
Yeah, just cap it. Just why wouldn't you just try to, you know, cap it, you know?
Go ahead.
My thought was that this is, the opera money is a one-time source of funding and we put a fairly significant addition on the school. And based on the tour that I went through, there is very little drinking water available throughout the building at all that's safe for the children to drink. And I think that there should at least be an attempt to put in the proper amount of access to drinking water for that size population. I mean, I'm sure there's some standards that they say when they build an elementary school with this many students in it, how many sources of clean drinking water should they have? I mean, it just to me seems short-sighted to not make sure you... I don't want to overspend, but I'd like to get this done properly so that it meets some level of criteria and not just, you know...
I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't want to disconnect toilets on lead.
If we don't need it.
I want to make sure that it's only drinking water, if there's a way to do it. So we have a new water... Mark brought it up last time, right? About the water meters. I guess we have two or two sources coming in?
Yeah, the highway and water department, when they did all the site work, we ran a brand-new main right down the sidewalk, right across the parking lot and connected it all the way right to Yale Street. And that's what's feeding the cafeteria and the gym and whatnot.
So can the engineers tap off of that and get all the necessary drinking water in the building without touching the...
We already put two new, you know, feeds into the building.
Yeah.
For that. So I'm just kind of guessing, but pretty sure the boiler is on the other side of the building.
Yeah.
Being fed by the old main. So if we're going to go off this new stuff over here, I would assume just that is going to feed the bubblers. I don't think we're going to run a thing all the way across to feed the boiler there. I don't see any need.
And they're not going to replace any of the lines, right? Off the old service?
I wouldn't think so. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm not a plumber either.
Kind of my own common sense. But I would imagine we go right off the new stuff on this side of the building, right out to wherever we want for the bubblers.
Yeah.
And...
My issue is, Mr. Chair and the rest of the Board, that we do just amount, spend just amount on what's drinking water. And I don't know if the company will give us drawings on ripping out things that are unnecessary. So I just, I want to be, you know, cautious on that, that's all.
I'm sure we can ask.
You can check on that, Rebecca?
Yeah.
And maybe report back at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting and if they can answer it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good. Next is irrigation well at the Pines Recreation Area. Rebecca had some information on that and then Mark had some information on it.
I believe Rennie is also on the phone.
Oh, Rennie, Rennie's here. Rennie, you done mowing your lawn?
Hello?
You done mowing your lawn?
This is all dead. I haven't mowed it in months.
I couldn't hear him.
He hasn't mowed in months.
Oh. You got information on the well at the Pines?
Yes, so we had cured some pricing to drill a new well in the area of the house two years back. And also develop and install a pump of that well once it was drilled. So those prices are pretty...
He's breaking up.
Yeah, it keeps cutting up. We lost them.
Right.
So essentially, we had, have, or we have an issue with the current well that's over at the Pines that is providing the irrigation for the softball, baseball field, town hall complex, which includes PD and the library. We've had issues with the system in the past that I'm sure Mark can speak to, a lot of silation buildup. And there's a lot of overtasking of the well. I guess the original intent was only for the ball fields and then we added the irrigation to town hall and that kind of made things a little bit more challenging. So essentially, recently, the well is just not performing. And we're... Are you still there, Rennie?
If I could, if we turned off the visual and just did audio, we might hear him better. That's why I was talking to Rebecca before, Mr. Chairman. I keep losing my connection too here. The internet's terrible. Like if we turn off the picture, can we just hear him audio? We might be able to hear him.
I keep losing you guys.
Yes, we keep losing you too.
It's just like this much internet. I can't fix that.
Yeah, it's bad.
I don't have my video on at all anyways.
Yeah.
I think we lost them again.
So, but essentially, the issue is that we need to drill a new well. We could spend money investigating and exploring the current condition of the current well, but from my understanding in conversations with Rennie and the experts is that it may cause the well not to function. If we're in there trying to figure it out and it might collapse in on itself and it could end up being a waste of money. And therefore, because the well has been problematic, it's not, it doesn't have the capacity to irrigate the areas that we're tying it to, that we thought it would be best to invest in a new well. And so we had gotten pricing for a new well and would like to ask that the Board fund that project through the American Rescue Funds because otherwise, we can't keep the irrigation system on town water. It's just not sustainable. It's a conversation that you've all have had in the past. That's why you went to an irrigation well. We just don't have the money to do town water for the irrigation for that large of an area.
Mark, you have something to add on that?
Well, it's been a problem for 10 years. So, I mean, it definitely needs to be addressed. I mean, only the 10 years that I worked for the town that I've known about it. But more or less, what happened was we had a filter system to get rid of the sediment because it was plugging up the heads. At the beginning, they put the wrong type of filter and they put a paper filter. We, I ended up changing it to a screen filter, which let some of the sediment go through, but not the big chunks. We ended up raising the well up, I think, 40 feet. And now it won't go back down. So that's why the wells got issues because we can't get it down because a rock fell in and you can't get the pump down. So they have to pull it all out and re-drill it and then that could cause even more issues. So that's why the new well is probably the better choice. But the only other thing I was thinking we might be able to do, I don't know if Rennie has talked about it. I haven't got a chance to call him. But if we did another well, we might be able to just, if we wanted to spend a little money to try to see if we could yank that out, frac it and then drop a new pipe down and just use that just for those two fields and then do a new well for town hall and the library and whatever else down the Pines. I don't know. I haven't had a chance to talk to Rennie. I've been working 10-hour days every day, so...
Rennie, did you hear that?
Yep.
What, comments?
So we did have, I did have Tom go down from Reliable and take a look at the well. He did a few tests on the pump. He did a few tests on the screen. Tried flushing it to see if that was the issue. Basically, there's just, there's no more fracturing in the well to recharge. So it's not really the screens, it's not really the pumps. The well itself has just been overtaxed. From what I've been told, that well, when it was, when they did develop it and they did test it, it had about enough water and volume to do that one field, the one baseball field down there. Obviously, we've been doing about four or five times that area with doing town hall and PD. Those areas are pretty big and they demand a lot of water. So basically, what you do when you overtax a well, it sucks all the, all the sediment gets sucked into the fracturing and the rocks and the well can't recharge. It's pretty simple geology that if you keep sucking on the straw when there's no...
And we just lost them.
Yeah.
Rebecca, what'd you say the cost was?
So when we were just looking at the new well itself between actually drilling the well and then the connection piece to the existing irrigation system, we were looking at about $60,000 with a little bit more, maybe by maybe $4,000, $3,000 of wiggle room if there were any unforeseen circumstances or anything that we needed in addition for the trenching into getting across the other side because the location of the well that we're looking at is closer to the playground in the center. And I guess that's originally where they were going to drill the well based upon some original testing that they had done. So we will have to cross over the pavement in order to get to the connection.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. First, I do recall we had this conversation when Dan first got on the board. And I remember being confused because I thought we were talking about the town well and it became clear we're talking about the well that waters the fields. And I didn't, I didn't actually realize we had a separate well for the fields. So this has been an ongoing problem. So it's not just drought-related? This is just ongoing?
We haven't been tapping into our irrigation wells at all during the drought. This is long before. Mark can speak specifically to that. I know it's been a very problematic area for quite some time.
So the process of doing something like this, since it's a well for the watering of the fields and not for town water supply, do we involve the water and sewer department in this at all?
No, the irrigation is completely separate. Drinking water is under a totally different realm.
Okay, so it's up to the town side then to get our bids and everything as to who, you put it out to bid?
Correct, we would put out to bid.
And then you went to see who comes up with this? But who does the testing to see? I mean, do the big people come in and test?
So, I was told testing has already been, had already been done. I think Bill Dunn was a Board of Selectmen member at the time and Denise was the Finance Director and there was quite some conversation and debate over the particular area. When we had an initial walkthrough and we went through at the pines, the gentleman had recalled that that would have been the area that they would have likely have chosen. But then, they had moved that area over to the new shed that was done just a few years ago. But that doesn't have the capacity to do anything more than the utility field that it, that it services now. So, this particular area, they, I guess through that process, had deemed as a more suitable location. Anything closer down to the water would get you into the same situation that the other well is currently in. And I believe that's just because of the soils in addition to the well development itself. And I think Mark can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, well, we, we probably should have it re, I don't want to say tested or surveyed for where, you know, because what it was is Bob Arcanyan's cousin, I believe. He does the dowson rods and that he does it for the well companies or at least he used to. He might not do it anymore. Might be retired. But, uh, he walked in roughly between, halfway between the bathrooms and the gazebo. It was pretty much right in that area. He said, "That's where you should do it." And...
Based on walking?
With the dowson rods. I, I don't know. It's kind of some like voodoo stuff or something. But, I mean, there, there is some type of science behind it because clearly, whoever decided to put the well down in for the utility field, we went down 900 feet and we're only getting 15 gallons a minute. So, and you're 300 feet away from a river, so think about that for a second, but, um...
And the only field that's green right now is that particular area that they're looking to put the well in.
To do those two fields plus all up here, you need, they're, they're going to tell you that you need 15 gallons a minute, but I mean, some of those heads are putting out four and a half gallons a minute themselves and there's four to five depending on the zone. So, I mean, I, I think we need, whatever we do, we got to make sure we go like an eight-inch casing, like a big well. Like, let's not fool around and do what we did.
Do you think the original well is in the wrong place? The well that we have?
No, it's just, like Rennie said, it's, what happened? We screwed ourselves when we raised it up. We should have left it lower, put the water, the pump deeper in the water. I mean, that, that well, I think, is only like 360 feet and the, the pump is hanging 140, I believe, is what I think.
And that's about a 25-year-old pump though, like a 25-year-old well?
Well, the well hole, but we changed the pump and the pipe already, um, seven, eight years ago.
You got 25 years of life out of the, out of the well itself.
Yeah, so... I mean, you could, honestly, you could probably just keep that well if you wanted to just put a sink in the, in that shed or something. I mean, I wouldn't go filling it in, but it's still good. You get 15 minutes' worth of water out of it before it has to recharge.
Uh, Dan, first you and Kathy?
At a prior meeting, I was told that we can't mix drinking water with river water. But, I mean, it seems silly to me we're next to the Mermack River and we can't get enough water for a baseball field and a softball field. So, is there any law that prohibits us from draining water out of the Mermack? You know, it seems like a $60,000... Who's to say that if they drill another one, it's not going to go dry? And certainly, if they do it, it ought to be done right so it has sleeves in it so it doesn't collapse. I mean, who's to say we're not going to spend 60 grand and then another boulder plugs it up? Or they overuse it? Is somebody going to monitor the use of the water so it doesn't run dry and we just waste $60,000? So, how do we know we do it and do it right and get another 25 years out of it? And why can't we use river water to water baseball fields? I mean, with whatever they're dumping in the river, it comes pre-fertilized, you know? So, it might be good. We might have, might be like the, my leach field. It's green. So, not being facetious, so we're next to the Mermack River. We can't get water. Uh, it, it, to me, it's perplexing.
Is it, is the Army Corps of Engi, am I right? The Army Corps of Engineers or whatever it is? You have to go through anything you do with the river. Use a lot of red tape. You can't just go plunk a hose in there and start pumping more.
We got a bolt ramp in there.
Right, but we had...
Put the well rig in the bolt ramp.
You have to get that approved. You have to get Moryn's approved. Everything has to get approved. But, I guess my only concern is just to, as to the placement, if possible, if we could have, feel fairly certain, if you're just going to go out to bid for one spot to get, you know, bids on what it would cost to put a well in this one spot, until you put the well in, you don't know what that spot really has, right?
Right.
Can we fix, can we fix the well we have and get the boulders out? I mean, can it be fixed?
Uh, you mentioned the fracking. Is that, that, that would work?
Also, well, you, like I said, I believe that well is like 350 feet or something deep and the pumps only hang in 140. I was hoping, you know, 10 years ago, when I realized it was a problem and said something and nobody did anything about it, I was hoping we could, you know, pull it out, clean out the chunks and put the pump down 200 feet. You know, put it deeper in the water. I was told you can't do that, but I'm not a well guy, so...
So...
I have to go against professionals.
You, you getting in contact with, with Rennie?
Not now. He's texting me, but he's not able to get back on.
Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Is this the type of thing that needs to go out to public bid?
Oh, yeah.
So, can we get a bid on two things maybe? Cost to repair it, if possible, and then a cost to replace it and relocate it someplace else?
So, we have a sole proprietor that is in the town that we would be able to utilize in order to move forward with the current, the, the actual current well that we have. We did have him out to the site. Rennie would be able to speak more directly to that. But there was that discussion as to whether or not you're going to spend $3,000 to $5,000 trying to fix something that is just collapsing in on itself and is not repairable. And is that a good use of funds as well?
I don't know if you can add sleeves, you know? I don't know if it's like lining a chimney. I have no idea. I don't know if it's an Artesian well-type of thing and you go down and then you put the sleeves in it, you know? It just seems to me that if it collapsed, but there's a gap there, you could sleeve it up and, and prevent it from collapsing. I just...
It's the bedrock that's falling apart.
Yeah, there's no way to extract that.
No, that's why I'm saying you could go down there, smash the stuff and get it down.
Can you re-drill the hole, like, you know?
Well, only because it's a six-inch casing down there, I think. You need at least an eight. The bottom line is that well's never going to be big enough for everything anyways. That's good enough for those two fields and that's honestly a...
I don't know if you can re-drill it like the amalgam in my tooth, you know? Put a bigger filling in it, you know? Is it just a matter of drilling it out, cleaning it up and sleeving it up? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think Mark touched on it a little bit earlier with the bedrock being clogged because the cracks in it, if taken in the sediment, is that you can't pull the water through it. And so, even if you re-frack it, there's a good chance that it's just going to fill back up with sediment and you're not going to have the flow that you're initially going to get in a very relatively short period of time.
Right. So, it's not, it's not in solid bedrock is what you're saying. It's not. It needs to be in rock so that it doesn't have excessive sediment.
And that's because it's close to the river. So, the further away from the river you get, the cleaner the ground is. And that's why they said that that would have been a prefer, more preferred area to drill the well the first time. But I, I, I don't have the answer why they put it there. But it's been 10 years' worth of problems. And ultimately, if you spend the $7,000 to check it out and try to get it fixed, you'd spend another $40,000 to actually proceed with getting it fixed to have a well that you've already had problems with over the past 10 years and most likely will continue to have problems with it because of the sediment.
So, it's good money after bad money, in your opinion?
Yes. So, I think it's, uh, would be much more prudent to move further away from the, the river where it should have gone the first, first time around.
Okay, Kathy?
So, if we wanted to go to the next step, who would be the person that would write up some type of a proposal about what it is we're trying to accomplish here?
So, we did get a couple of quotes. So, we would be able to use those quotes and be able to assemble a project. Go both Rennie and I.
Oh, and then presented to us?
If that's what you would prefer.
I, I think I would like to see that, yes. I, I mean, that's me. I would like to see that.
I mean, we got two well guys in town, so I would like to see both of them bid on it because try to keep our money in town, you know?
Absolutely. Uh, is there a motion?
One more question, Mr. Chair. All right, I'm not going to belabor it any further. But do we get a guarantee that we get water and that if it runs dry, they're going to do it again? I don't want to, I don't want to waste 60 grand. I'm not kidding.
I understand.
Do they guarantee water flow?
I, I'm not enough of an expert to know, but I, my understanding is that you can't get a guarantee.
That's, that's a risk?
But I do know that we can't water on town water 100%. There's just not enough money.
Better get it right. They better know what they're doing.
Do we also want to look into the river just to see what that entails? I know Penn Tucket did it for a while and then...
I thought the permitting was an issue with that.
Yeah, and then they got in trouble or something.
Yes.
Yeah, but can you apply and then wait two years or 10 years and we'll get it eventually? I mean, it might be worth filling out the papers.
I think that's something that Bill Dunn and Denise already looked into and it was going to cost three times what the well would cost. And then, there was a continuous permitting issue. And they said that the silt from the river would constantly clog and require tremendous amount of maintenance. If I remember correctly, when we first were talking about, uh, the well going in for the utility field. They, they had talked about already doing that. You might want to check back in the minutes.
The other issue with the river is we're on the crappy side. We get all the trees. We get all the debris.
We do.
Over on the Havel side, it's a little bit deeper and, you know, it's nice cleaner, cleaner water. So, you're going to have, during storm, you know, storm season, stuff's going to be taking it out, you know, taking out the flow, taking out the suction line, you know? It's, that will be a full-time job just maintaining that type of stuff too. There's another thing to think about, so...
Run the hose out to the middle. Put it right in the channel. I'd figure out how to do it. I'd get it out there, get some scuba dives out there, put that hose right in the middle, have it come up a foot. So, it's like, you know, off the bottom. So, there's no sediment.
Why don't you work on that one?
Put some screens on it.
All right, is there, uh...
Get enough volunteer in here.
Motion or, uh...
I'm motion for Dan to work on his proposal, but in the interim, if Rebecca could come up...
You're going to look into the permitting process and see what, what permits are required and...
Scuba, yeah, I'll go do it.
Or look for an old file. We may have an old file. But I, I would be interested in what Rebecca has already worked with Rennie on and just have it specked out and see what we're talking about cost-wise and, and maybe just get this taken care of.
All right, so you two can figure that out somewhat?
Well, she'll bring it to us.
Okay.
You two. I don't know anything about a well.
Wage Classification and Analysis Project. And Kathy, you wanted that?
So, I, I checked with the, Mr. Chair, I checked with the Collins Center who's performing the Wage Classification and Analysis Project. This is a, a project that's being funded by the American Rescue Funds that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen. The survey data collection is completed. The Collins Center is writing the draft job descriptions and anticipates getting them back to the town by Labor Day. Once they receive comments back on the drafts, they anticipate being able to give us a draft report, which should be in October.
Okay. Any questions to add to that?
No, I just, well, my, my point in asking for it to come up is because I was hoping that Rebecca was going to be able to tell us that it's going to be here prior to the budget season. And personally, I don't believe in paying for studies and then putting them on the shelf. I intend to look at this and to hopefully find a way to make some steps on some of the salaries that maybe are not in alignment, starting with this coming budget year, even if it means pushing something else off because all of these employees have been waiting. The ones that have been supportive of the study and have held back and not tried to run ahead and get their raises, they've been waiting for this study. And I, I feel that if we don't stand behind it, we're just going to have town meetings go run amok. They're going to get special interest into support. The library getting more money for their people. Council and agent getting more money for their people. Everybody's going to be fighting. And I, I'm, I would like to see the Board of Selectmen really support this study and make, make an effort to make sure that we make a step in the right direction based on what the study shows us.
Okay.
Well, I'm just wondering if the board members all feel the same way.
Any comments? Yep. Dan?
Yeah, I'm all for obtaining information and looking at what it tells us. Whether or not we can react and give everybody pay raises is another issue. I mean, we have, you know, budget issues and Prop 2 and 1/2, so, you know, maybe we could look at it and cure some things that are way out of line. Juggle some numbers around and re-appropriate, but we still have limited finances. But I'm all for information and see what it sheds light on.
Mark, you got it?
Yeah, no, I'm kind of, pretty much the same thing. Like I said, I worked for the town for 10 years and there's a reason I left. It's pretty, pretty obvious. We need to take care of our employees because we have a lot of good, talented people and, you know, they got families too. It's hard to live in a town that you, you know, work for that, you know, you can't afford to, so...
Right.
It's definitely something we need to look into.
Yeah.
I'm curious to see it.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see what the study says. I don't know how we can, how we can say we're going to, we're going to support the, the project till we see the actual figures because we, uh, we need to support our employees, but we, we, there's only so much money to go around. And I, I'm sure that this is going to say that we're, uh, we're on the low end of the scale as far as some of our employees, but, uh, we need to take a look, see how far out of line we are and figure out how we're going to come up with the money. So, I don't know how we can support it, uh, until we look at the, look, look at the figures that they come up with.
Well, yes, but we've supported like the two firefighters coming in on a grant and we know that we're going to have to figure that out. And the Council on Agent wanted to use grant money to raise that salary and we supported that knowing maybe at some point that grant might run out. I just feel that we have to put this in the same playing field as those. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, everybody has to be considered the same way, whether it's grant-funded or, or just underfunded. To me, it's the same thing. Where are we going to start to move to be a town that, that shows some equity and fairness and, and stop this, stop this issue of these personnel issues blowing up in our face, either at town meeting or in our own meetings? Because, you know, there's that friction. There's that sense of not being treated fairly.
Okay, what do you, Dan?
I, I think we need to look at it and scrutinize the numbers and what the limitations are and what, you know, what, what data did they collect? How did they analyze it? Because certainly, uh, I, I want to know what towns they compared Groveland to because, you know, if you look at the law of averages, it can be skewed, okay? So, you know, if you want to get a job in Boston, you can make more money.
Yeah.
Uh, if you want to live in the, in the burbs, maybe you get less money, but the quality of life is something that's important to you. So, there's trade-offs no matter where you work, you know? Used to drive 128. I used to work in Boston. I get tired of it, okay? So, those are, those are, those are intangibles and I don't know what the survey is going to, uh, say about those issues, but I certainly want to look at them because we can't just move everything up to the law of averages, okay? You know, we're not Brockton. We're not Worcester. We're not, we're not any of that. We're Groveland. So, you know, I, I just think we have to scrutinize it. It can't be a situation where we vote on it and then we read it, okay? Let's read it and then we'll vote on it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I agree. I mean, though, that was the whole reason why we went forward with the study and I think that Collins, the reason why we chose the Collins Center is because they take a lot of that in consideration. So, ultimately, we can't really do much until we get the report. So, when we get it, then we can make those determinations. And I felt pretty confident that we all supported it and that's why we moved forward to get the report.
Right. And I like that they're doing the job descriptions because I don't know how many towns have so many people wearing so many hats at one time as we do in Groveland. We have such small staff that do so many things all at once. Other towns have two or three people doing those tasks. We have one or two people doing three or four tasks. So, I'm hoping that that will be reflected in this study as well.
Okay. It seems like we're all in agreement. Next, memorial request on Elm Park by Mariah Ling of Hawthorne Stone in Groveland. Jason, you want to read that note that we got?
Hello, this is Mariah Ling, owner of Hawthorne Stone in Groveland. I was hoping to have a flower memorial put on the grassy area out in front. It is urgent since the one-year anniversary of death is tomorrow. I thought someone else was taking care of this pot, so it's last minute. I was planning to work with Noonan's on flowers. Thanks.
Okay.
I, I'm not able to open my packet in here. Can I see that, please?
Uh, Rebecca, did you get an answer to some of the questions? How long is it going to be there?
So, I tried to reach out and I did get an email from Mariah. She said that she would be in attendance this evening. I, I don't believe that she is unless she's trying to participate through Zoom and something happened with the connection. She did email me and state that the flowers will be maintained by the person who maintains the flowers with Noonan's that are around the town and that it is for a member of our community whose wife passed away a year ago. She is buried in Connecticut, so they wanted to have a space here where he can memorialize her. They did put the memorial out already. It is out in front of, right behind the clock tower, kind of right in front of their store past the parking area. But she did not mention any more information in terms of any of the other questions or request for more information.
Okay. Um, anybody comments?
Well, it's, it's a historic park. We restored a historic park. So, I'm just wondering, we did the senior pictures for the graduation, but I, I'm not familiar with what this really is.
When you go down at the...
No, but is it for one person or is it for some?
One person.
So, I didn't think that was a use of Elm Park myself. That's a historic park. I, because I think if you start that, then what else could follow with people in town asking to honor somebody, you know? I, I'm just a little concerned about that. It doesn't say much in the, in the memo and I don't want to be insensitive. However, it is, it is a park. So, you can't just put things in a park without permission, correct?
And, and I'd, I'd like to know, is this, is this a permanent, is this a permanent thing? Or is this just going to be there for a few days? Maybe we could get ahold of her and answer to some of the questions.
I'll send her another email and, and give her...
Does she, uh, maybe, maybe we'll go down and see her?
Do that too?
Yeah. I can stop in there tomorrow and get some, I, I have no idea who she is, but, uh, we'll find out.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I, I don't have any objection to her planting flowers. I mean, it is a park, but, you know, I drive by it all the time and it's more of a glorified median strip. I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen anybody plant it, you know? It looks nice. It's aesthetically pleasing. So, I don't see any problem with planting flowers. I understand, you know, I just, um, find out what she wants to do. It's late in the season. I can't imagine, you know, it's going to be an obstruction to anything. Safety issue. We allow the use of public, open space for a lot of things by permit and I think this is a request. She says it's urgent. I don't know, you know, it's an anniversary, so it's, it's, you know, certainly, um, because of that, the time is of the essence for her. know, certainly because of that, the time is of the essence for her. But, you know, if it's placed in a certain spot, you know, I, I think it's just an easy, easy yes. Thank you.
It, it's, it's a pot, it's probably 12 inches round, maybe, maybe a little over that in height, it's on the grass. It, I don't think it's offensive, but like Kathy said, I don't think that's the purpose of the park, but let's get some answers, find out how long it's gonna be there if, if it's intended to be permanent.
Ms...
Go ahead.
It's, um, the money that was used for, it's not a grass median. This is a restoration of what was a historic Elm Park in Groveland. That's why the clock tower's there, that's why everything is spaced the way it is. There was a group of people that spent a considerable amount of time to restore this to what it is now, so that it looks somewhat similar to the older pictures. So I believe we accepted historic grant money to preserve it in that form, and I believe that ties us to that design.
Well, I'll make a motion to allow flowers in the historic location, because I don't know that flowers detract from any historic location, so that's my motion before the Board.
Well...
Is a motion, is there a second?
Are we still discussing, or?
Hmm?
All right.
Motion and a second. Further discussion, Kathy?
Well, just again, it sounds like it's for one person, so that means if somebody else wants to put flowers for their person and their person, I mean, we do have a town cemetery, too, and we have churches, and we have, you know, our own homes where we can remember people we've lost as well, and I just feel that this is a historic restoration of a park.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I won't belabor it, but that's, that is what it is.
We allowed all kinds of pictures of high school graduates, because they're members of the community.
Community, yes.
So I don't, you know, if we could have pictures of, you know, my kids, triplets coming up, hopefully they all graduate next year, and you can put flowers out there, okay? I want flowers next to my, instead of the picture of my kids. How about that? I want three-parted plants.
Uh, go ahead, Jason.
I think the biggest thing is, is we have to find out what their intention is before we actually make a vote. I mean, if they plan on making it permanent, I think that's probably not appropriate. If it's a temporary thing, yeah, I can understand it, because they're not planting them in the ground, it's actually in a pot, like you said. If it was gonna be temporary, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but we don't have enough information to actually cast a vote.
All right, motion to table, and we'll get some answers to the question. Motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second or a motion to table?
That's, that's what I wanted, was trying to say, just, we should, we should wait to see what she wants, because she can put a flower pot on the corner of her sidewalk.
Well, yeah.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Mr. Chair?
What's that? I'll second that.
I was gonna say, why don't we make a motion to make it temporary, if that's the resolution?
We're ready, motion on the floor, the table. All in favor of tabling it? Opposed? All in favor, one opposed. Motion was the table. Rebecca, I'll work with you, we'll see if we get some answers. Next is a waste management contract discussion. Mark, you wanted this on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize that we had it for a five-year period, but, well, obviously, we all know that we had another incident, was that last Thursday? I believe, I can't remember. But I, I gotta read through this a little bit better, didn't have enough time today, but I wanna know if there's any interest in trying to get some better quotes, because we've had, what, four incidents in under a year now? I mean, I'm just curious to see if there's anybody else, if there's anybody else cheaper that, you know, isn't gonna break down, isn't gonna have issues. I don't know, I, I've heard a hundred complaints, you know, on, you know, typical town crier, but it's, I don't know, so many issues in one year, it just kinda, something's kinda caught my attention here. Just curious if anybody else...
Anybody else?
...read or anything?
Go ahead.
Actually, I think, I've spoken, I think I've spoken with you a bit about the fact that even though it's a five-year contract, we would, we should really start now, looking at everything, because whether you hire Waste Management or Mellow or any of the others, the problem is the cost of trash is just going through the ceiling. So to start to look at, like, other towns and how they're doing it, some towns do the pay-as-you-throw. That's one, the one that the state recommends the most, where you take it, actually, you underwrite, you get it out of the town budget, and people contract for the person they want to handle their trash, and you, you pay for what you throw, is what it is. As opposed to the model you see in, like, West Newbury and Heverle, where they're buying all of the uniform barrels, and you have a company come in, and those are the barrels they have to close. Right now, we're in an in-between land. You'll see some barrels that have trash piled on them when it shouldn't be, they're not all the barrels that can be lifted. But I think it's a good point to bring up, because if we don't start to look at everything now, before you know it, we're within two years of the end of the contract, and that's when you really should start figuring out what you wanna do.
Yep, no, I...
You know, so it's, I think it's good to bring it up.
My, my point is, is just, if I hired a company and they kept having issues over and over, and, I don't know, I, I just, I would start looking for somebody else to, you know, mow my lawn if they ran over my flowers, or, you know, some, you know, like, I just, like I said, four issues in under a year, it just kinda, to me, it just threw up a red flag, like, either they're, you know, understaffed and just trying to, just throw, they got the one truck going and going, and just, I don't know, maybe we should look for somebody better, if there is somebody better, if not, but just something I thought we should kinda get on, you know, figure it out.
Well, my...
Go ahead.
My question to the Board and, and to, to our Town Administrator, more importantly, is since I've been on the Board, the Board of Health is normally the entity that would be handling this, but they don't, and they haven't. Since with Denise, I believe, the contract went over to the Board of Selectmen for whatever reason. So, like in West Newbury, if you go, like, I know the Chairman of the Board of Health, he could sit down with us and go over their contract and tell us everything about it. We could gather contracts and bring them to the Town Administrator if that's helpful, but I don't wanna interfere with what you're already doing or thinking about, but I also don't wanna overstep. Is the Board of Health supposed to be doing anything about anything with this? Who's, who is this contract ultimately going to be decided by? That, that's my question. I'd like to get that clarified.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We should look at all-cost analysis. We have time to do it. I don't know how many municipalities in the Commonwealth outsource their trash and how many do it in-house, but I'm sure Waste Management doesn't do this as a hobby, there's a profit involved, okay?
Oh, yeah. It's big bucks.
Yeah, publicly traded company. So if we cut out the middleman, we might be able to cut out prevailing wages, which really stick it to the taxpayers in the Commonwealth, okay? And if we could save that by bringing it in-house, as much as it goes against the grain of expanding the bureaucracy, maybe this is the eye-before-e, except-after-see situation where we ought to take a hard look at getting a couple of trash trucks and maybe packing it up and pay the rate per tonnage that Waste Management and everyone else pays. It seems to me it's a commodity on trash, you pay the going rate. So the only variables involved are the middleman, prevailing wages versus in-house salaries, pensions, and benefits, which we're paying for anyways through the nose. So if we have time, is there any way we can put, you know, information feelers out there with Mass Municipal or some other, there has to be, there has to be some small municipalities out in the western part of the state or somebody that has a model similar to Groveland that might be able to do this for less than a million bucks a year, you know? And, and, and that's where we're going. And until we answer that question, I don't think we're doing our homework, you know? Otherwise, we're at the mercy of Waste Management and, and the other half a dozen local trash-collecting, and they all compare answers, they have to. It's, you know, I don't wanna be cynical, but I, how can I not be? It's like Verizon and Comcast, yeah, there's competition. Guys probably golf with each other. So that's my two cents, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the Board.
Okay. Anybody? Kathy?
Yeah, I mean, Georgetown, I, I understand, has a transfer station, so that's a little different. And then, like I said, other towns offer one or two companies and leave it up to the homeowners. That's why, if you tried to call Waste Management, one of the first things they'll ask you for is your customer ID, which our people don't have, because we're a municipality, we're not individual customers. So we could, if, if this is something that the Board wants, wants to start looking at, we could, again, is the Board of Health gonna do anything, or is this gonna be all done by the, by the Board and the Town Administrator? I just don't wanna get into a turf war with the Board of Health at the last minute either. I just want them to weigh in and tell us.
Mr. Chair, I mean, does the Board of Health want the responsibility of managing the trash contract and taking all of the complaints on who doesn't pick up on Tuesday or Thursday, really? I mean, is that really the, the primary function of the Board of Health in town? I don't think it is. I think it's an administrative management issue, and it's the Board of Selectmen's sole headache.
Well, they do take, they do take numerous complaints through the, the trash coordinator over at the Board of Health, and I know some go to Rebecca, some go to the trash coordinator, some go to the members of the Board of Selectmen. And we should find out how it should be done. But the ultimate sign of the contract, go to the Board of Selectmen.
The box stops here, in my opinion.
But, you know, they should certainly weigh in.
But the question is, do you want to wait till you just go out to bid, or do you want to really look at the different models? In which case, we have an expert Town Administrator to tell us, well, whatever we can do to help, without stepping on your toes and getting in your way, that would be my, my only concern.
I can do research, if that's what you're asking.
Well, you're doing everything, though. If you wanted us to do any help, anything, you could tell us, right?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds fair.
All right. So we'll get started on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. Update on the Pennsyltucket School Tour. Dan, you're on the Building Committee, you wanna, you wanna give a quick synopsis of the tour that we all took?
The committee meeting of the tour? Because there was a committee meeting that Rebecca and I zoomed in on. So they spent, what, over a million dollars on conduits and bases for light poles at the football field, and I questioned why they didn't put it out to bid, and the response was, could somebody explain to him how the state bidding process works? Oh, thank you. I was wondering why she couldn't explain it to me, but, so they apparently purchased off the state bid list, and I don't know if there was one vendor on there, or two or three, but I'd, I'd appreciate it if they would do everything they can to try to save the taxpayers' money. But the response, and anyone can watch it if it's on the cable, that the answer was, well, it would take more time. So there you go, there's your tax dollars, folks, it would take more time. So I got a tour of the building. As expected, it's over-the-top Taj Mahal, it's beautiful. I've been to a lot of high schools and middle schools, because I got a couple of kids that play sports, and so I think right now it's the best public building facility in Essex County, public, not private. I would say St. John's perhaps a little bit nicer, but for public schools, it's phenomenal. I questioned some things that have to do with that. I was told that there weren't dedicated classrooms for the teachers, and they have a teacher room with countertops and chairs in it, so I, I, you know, that's a question I think parents ought to ask, and I don't know if the teachers, what they, what they thought about that, but apparently there's not gonna be a dedicated desk in each classroom, so I, you know, and more curiosity as to why, you know, I think people know where I'm standing, I'm conservative, and they have signs up all genders. Grammatically, it's incorrect, it's both, but that's a debate for the public. So, you know, I think it's a marvel of engineering and social engineering, and I think people ought to go see it, so you see how your tax dollars are spent here in the district. Thank you.
Anybody else, Kathy?
Um, yes, so I also took a tour of the building and, you know, seeing it from the perspective of, you know, a Town Selectman, a ex-finance committee member, and also as an educator. And in addition, having seen where I work at Whittier, that they are looking at the beginning steps of the same process, that there are certain common, commonalities that will be put in every building, and the, the use of natural light is one of them, and that's why the windows are there, so the natural light is coming in as much as possible. They're all made to be eco-friendly, things turn off automatically, so things don't get left on. The, the use of classrooms in a high, in a high school, teachers, we move classrooms all the time, that's not a big deal. Everything's on our technology, I don't need to have my pencil can with me or whatever. So...
Seventh grade, too.
Yeah, but seventh grade will be fine as well. It's not, it's not as it was, it's, everything now is far more driven by technology and the need to be able to connect to the technology where you're going to teach. What I thought was, was very good and very efficient were a couple of things. One is the flexibility of the classroom space, so that it can be reconfigured for bigger or smaller classes, or even divided into two rooms to make room for, if two classes are needed. I also was surprised to realize that the cafeteria in any school building is used an hour and a half a day, and then it's pretty much empty. And so in lieu of that, they've created a space where the cafeteria food would be prepared, and there is seating there in different areas, and then there will be these kiosks, which will have the wraps, the sandwiches, the things the kids want, positioned throughout the building in the other seating areas that can then be repurposed for eating, and then repurposed back for instruction, which I think is, is very, very forward-looking. And, you know, if, if our school population were to grow, right now we seem to be going down a little bit, but if it were to grow, I think this building has the space and the efficiency and the flexibility to be reconfigured to handle that. Like, if the middle school grades grow faster, they can reconfigure there, they can reconfigure the high school side. It's, it's very, very flexible, which the buildings that I work in and other teachers work in are rigid. We have rooms that are just like this, and only somebody does fit in this, and when that's full, then you don't have a place to put the students. So it's, it's all handicapped accessible, the bathroom placements are much better than I've seen in any school building. I think Essex Tech, if you wanna know, Dan, is similar to this, except they connected the shops to the academic areas in their model. They just recently built a brand-new school. So the new buildings that you're going to see are going to have this look, this natural light, this flexibility of moving and reconfiguring to adapt to a world that's changing just as rapidly as can be, you know? You know, one day the cellphone you have is state-of-the-art, and two or three years from now, it's junk. This is how things are moving, how quickly they're moving. So even the tech schools are moving towards this kind of school building. I think it will inspire students, and I think it will attract teachers, and I think people are going to be genuinely really happy with this, this building, even having the 7th through 12 in one building, just because of the improvement in, in the ability to educate and inspire and get, get students excited to be in school. So I, I'm really thrilled to see this happening, I think it's gonna be great.
Dan?
This is what I asked you, I mean, you're a teacher.
Yes.
I mean, is, is it important, or is it not important, that, like, a certain teacher teaches in classroom number two? I just, they said that there's, like, where's the teacher's desks while they...
Oh, they're in a room, so like...
They're in a room.
No, no, but none of you...
They're not in the classroom.
No, but you're assigned, well, you don't really, that's for your prep, I mean...
But it was explained to me that they don't have...
What?
Dedicated classrooms. I, I didn't know what they meant by that.
So my guess would be, most likely, the science teachers are dedicated because of the equipment that's in the rooms, that, that would, but like, English, math, and history, maybe you'd cir, circle through two classrooms a day, depending on scheduling?
As long as the kids go to the same place every day.
Oh, yeah, 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 they, they would go to the same room.
Routine and predictability is important. It's not a college campus, while today, like...
No, it's not a, where's Waldo?
I hope they don't keep shuffling the deck.
No, 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 no. The classroom, the kid, the student's schedule is fixed.
It's brand-new, and I hope they have a home room and they, like, start decorating it, because it looks a little too white to me, it's institutional, so once they put some color in it, it'll be nice.
Well, they, you saw the wire racks, that's the, going to be the artwork is gonna go up there from the students, yeah, so they're gonna...
Wait till it's decorated.
I think...
Jason, you had something?
My understanding of the reason why they eliminated the teacher's desk is because there's gonna be less movement of the students...
Yeah.
And more movement of the teachers.
I don't understand that. It's just, it's, straighten me out on that, please.
I don't understand it either.
I don't understand it either.
Musical teachers, but not students.
No, but it's easy. You just go to another classroom with your iPad and your laptop. What's the problem? Teach the class.
So the teachers won't stay in, like, say, Room 222 for, like, you know, the six hours and 25 minutes? They move them around.
Well, yeah. We do that now, even. Like, my classroom this year will be used by one teacher during my open period because we were short classrooms. We've done it all along.
But I always liked, and maybe it's just me, it's like, if I know, I need to go find, you know, Ms. Castran Ellis, I can find her in Room Number X or Y or A, B, C.
Ask a few people. They'll get you.
I gotta chase you down, like, where is she?
They'll help you find me.
All right.
Somebody else will bring it up, I know. I'm not, you know?
It's a beautiful building.
It is nice.
It doesn't have a cafeteria. They call it a café. It looks like you're walking into a Starbucks restaurant. They're not cafeteria tables. They're, they're?
With a Starbucks.
Yeah. But I would like to see a letter go to our school committee to try to push for a tour for the people that are paying the bill, the people that, the people of town that voted for the school. They should get a chance to see the building and come up with their own comment. So I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the school committee to make sure that the townspeople get scheduled for a tour so they can see what their tax dollars went for.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion on that?
It's a no-brainer. Should be a given.
It should be. All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other comment, discussion? None? All in favor? unanimous. Rebecca, can we work on that? I'll work on that with you. We'll get a letter out to the school committee. Okay. Dan, you're right. It is a no-brainer.
Coming from me.
I can't top that. Next, update of 46 Washington Street CPC project. Mike, can you, hate to put you on the spot, but can you?
I'm sorry. I'm not on the spot.
Oh, darn.
Fine.
Your honor.
Yeah, we'll see about that.
Okay. Can you, what we're looking for, I think, is what's the update on the, the Board of Health was going to look into the septic system there? And I know we want to do, we might be getting some money that we want to, instead of renting it right away. Fill us in, please.
Okay. So as far as the community preservation project, that's moving along. We've got three main components. One is the landscaping out front. The second one is the survey of the property. And the third one is cleaning up the rear of the property, removing the fence and the trash and other equipment that's back there. So I've been working with Kathy to get vendors. We've got vendors lined up for the landscaping, and that's going to start in two weeks. The survey is going to be done?
Pretty soon.
A month or so, yep. And then we're still getting bids on the cleanup of the rear of the property. So that's going on as far as community preservation. As far as the septic system, it's kind of on hold right now. I think we decided to kind of wait until we get some of this other, the other things done. But from what I've been told by the Board of Health, I am pretty sure it's going to require a new septic system there, unfortunately. So if that is what's going to be required, then we'll be putting a new community preservation project together for Phase Two, and that'll be in there for part of it. I think that's about it.
Right. Well, except for the grant for?
Oh, yeah.
Underutilized town property, since it is underutilized.
Yes, so that's a mass development project, or a mass development grant, the Community One-Stop Grant. It just came out. If they're going to do it again, I'm not too sure if things will change with the difference in leadership, or soon-to-be difference in leadership, or whether or not the Community One-Stop Program will stay in effect. But if it does, it comes out in the springtime. So we'll be able to apply, and then we would figure out whether or not we would get an awarded grant in September, which we're hoping to hear back on our feasibility request for this year. So we can definitely start pursuing, getting all the additional quotes for the building, what it would take to bring the building up to compliance, what our proposed plans are, whether or not there's any additional plans to spend, or anything of that nature. Get that all ready and start that application process sooner rather than later.
Great.
Anybody got any questions from Mike?
I have a question for Rebecca. It's dependent upon a change in leadership. What leadership?
With the state, I know that it would?
What, governorship?
Yeah.
State legislature?
All of the above. I just know that there, that was something that Baker, Governor Baker, was very passionate about, with the Community Compact Program, the Community One-Stop Program. And then, I believe, combining all of those programs underneath the Community One-Stop umbrella. So I'm not too sure if that will change, or if it will stay in effect.
Okay. But it seems to be it's from the executive office, and it's not statutory, or the funds aren't available, that you would apply for those grants? Do they exist? And it's?
No.
The legislature's, I'm trying to?
So essentially?
Do they have money?
Yep, exactly. So the programs are all in effect and have been in effect even past governorships. I just meant, like, you know, Mass Development has their program, Mass Works has their program. There's other funding opportunities through different branches of the state that they offer these grant programs for. But what Governor Baker did was he took it and he put it all under this one umbrella of timing, so that you can apply, like, as a one-stop shop, like, okay, you want to apply for this, you can apply for this. So the funding would be available, but the timing would be different if they took it out of that umbrella. So if they changed the way that they just recently restructured it, I don't know whether or not we could apply in the spring and get an award in the fall. But if they keep it under that umbrella, then the standard timeline has been you apply in the spring and you get, you figure out if you're awarded in the fall.
All right. Now, Mr. Chair, can I ask Mike, you know, you said you're ready, hotspot, direct questions?
Yes.
Who owns that property? What's the end game? And what is your role in it? Are you trying to get it under the auspices of the control of the conservation historic? I mean, what's the end game here with that? Because we are strapped for cash. We talk about money all the time. Should that be a property that should be put up for sale, put up for lease, ground-lease it? What is the end game with that property, if you know? And what is your role in it?
Okay. It's owned by the town of Groveland. I am the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Some people on your board approached me about putting a grant together to clean up the building, and so that's what we did. It was voted and approved at the last 2021 town meeting. And so many times for community preservation projects, I kind of try to push them along. So that's been my only role. As far as an end game, I think what we would like to do is preserve the historic building and make it useful for something in the town. So that's what I've been working pretty much with Kathy and Rebecca. And hopefully, in the meantime, though, we can make it pay for itself. And so that's been the other effort, is to try to, you know, lease out some of it, and maybe if we can get somebody in there to lease part of it.
Would it be, would it be the right thing to do to maybe have a public hearing on it and see what the people want to do with it? I listen to people, and they wonder what's going on with it and why, and I question that myself. So who's driving the train? Is it you and Kathy and Rebecca? Or is it a consensus amongst the will of the people, as we call it? So I want to feel that out, because I don't know that there is a consensus amongst the people in town as to what to do with that property. And correct me if I'm wrong.
I can respond.
Just to answer your question, I mean, whatever we want to do, I mean, many times, people may have opinions, but if you're not willing to take some action on the opinions, they're useless. So?
Fair enough. So?
I'm taking the direction of what I suspect this board was. You know, when we applied for it a couple of years ago, the board wanted to do something with the building. So that's where it's coming from.
All right. I wasn't on the board a couple of years ago, so I don't know if it's a continuance. So I just, bring us up to speed.
Mike, didn't you, didn't you, a few years ago, didn't we vote at a town meeting? It had something to do with the waterway all the way from the meadow. Help me out with that. What was, remember something about that? We voted to look into maybe even restoring at some point the swimming area down there.
Yes. Well, we did a study of the Johnson's Pond Creek that goes all the way down to the Merrimack River, yeah. And one of the things that they looked at was, is there potential to restore the mill pond there? And they said there was.
There was. So you envision that at some point, maybe turning into a swimming area again?
Potentially, it could be. At least we could do, you can do fishing and boating there.
And skating.
And skating.
Shallow.
I don't remember boating. Fishing, even along the whole Johnson Creek from Meadow to right down under the culvert at Salem Street. And, you know, there was always some great fishing in that area.
Right.
But so you envision that, perhaps, again?
Yeah.
Within your lifetime.
I'd like to. I know that a lot of people would want to get back to the swimming, the way it was back in the '60s and '70s, if you could ever do it.
Anybody else? Jason?
Yeah, and I know, I know that, just from the comments, there's been a lot of comments about skating on the town crier and other places. And I still believe that there is an order of conditions from DEP, since that was a super fun site. And so we're going to be limited, and we have to involve them in whatever we do with it.
But that was part of the reason also that we're doing the survey, because that pond is on the church-owned property, not on town property. So we can't really use it. I don't know, as far as history, why we were able to use the pond for swimming before, because we never owned the property, and whether the church gave us the ability to do it or what, you know? So.
Kathy?
Yes, I think, I won't retread everything, but, and I'd be glad to do a sidewalk with Dan or anybody that didn't. But if you go back, when the water, when it's not dried out like it is now, when there's water in the pond, if it were cleaned up, it's a very beautiful little area, and that's one of the more heavily populated areas in town. So presumably, children and parents could walk to go fishing, or walk to go skating. And the other thing that now I've been kind of thinking about is the community trail now that's coming up from, by the storage facilities. I would think that you could go in through that way and somehow connect, and that would be another amazing use of the property. So I think it's the last mill building left from that whole era. It's kind of worth saving that little piece of brick if we can. And I think that for the community, the only other green space in that area that you can walk to is the baseball park, and that's pretty much fully used for baseball. So this would give another, you know, recreational area for fishing and?
Who owns the water, though?
Well, we're working on that. We're working on that.
So?
She's working on that. That goes to the chief.
Anybody else? Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, board and committee meeting recorded for public access. Kathy, you, this was your item?
Yes. I mean, I was just, I think that public access is recording at least our meetings and conservation meetings, right? And planning board meetings. But I know when we put together the business plan, you know, I think we budgeted for them to be able to have funding to record all town board and committee meetings as much as possible. You know, I have the document here, the draft business plan. I know we costed it out. That's why we collect a surcharge on the cable in order to pay, to provide to the citizens of Groveland means for them to see what their town boards and committees are working on. And so I thought we should extend the recording out to the, to the other boards that use the middle room as well. Record the Board of Health, Finance Board, and Council on Aging. Water and Sewer, they meet down at their building, right? So unless they come up and meet in the middle room, I don't, I don't think we have the staffing to have people driving all around town for this.
Yes, they have the portable, portable cameras, and they can record, put it on at a later time.
It's just a little more difficult.
They can't go live.
Right. I just didn't know if, we only have, what, two cable-recording people, or three? Three. But I would like to see what we could do to add more access. I mean, even the electric department, it would be nice to see one of their meetings. I went to one one time, but they're never on television. It'd be nice to be able to turn on, I usually use the computer, go to YouTube to look up and see if there's an issue that I'm interested in, see what's going on. That's why we collect the surcharge.
Yeah, I thought that was the plan when we, when we discussed it before.
So if, I wanted to make a motion to Rebecca, the Town Administrator coordinates the recording of shows, at least shows that are definitely in the middle room, I would, I would vote to have all those broadcast on cable access.
I thought they were now.
Nope.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Especially any board that has elected members? Because if you're really fighting for transparency, it's very important that they, they're elected, they should be out there and visible for everybody to see.
As much as possible, yes.
Okay. The motion, second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? Dan?
Yes. Not just elected, all-appointed boards. People need to know who's minding the store on every committee. Nothing, in my opinion, ought to be, you know, outside of the public eye. So that's my two cents. Everybody. If we have the money, cameras should be on for all meetings.
Okay. Anybody else? With a motion, there's a second. No further discussion. All in favor? unanimous. Next, Town Administrator time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of updates to let the board know that the HVAC work is finally completed at Town Hall, and the old system will be decommissioned by the end of the week. The final carpets are going to be installed in the Treasurer Collector's Office tomorrow. And once that is done and the move is completed, it will complete the Town Hall renovations. We also begin our lifecycle management contract with BSS on September 1st, and we will start to cycle in the new computers. It will be based on priority. We have some of our computers that are over seven years old. So hopefully, we'll be able to phase those out first and then go through the line. And then also to let the board know that Lynn Stanton will be returning as the interim Council on Aging Director, as the Council on Aging looks for their new director. We were very excited that she had graciously agreed to come back and fill this role for the interim, and she will begin this Wednesday. And then lastly, just to remind the board that Groveland Day is on September 10th. There will be a town table. It will be staffed by myself. We will also have our comprehensive master plan consultant at the Groveland Day as well, and they will be distributing information and survey results, and are looking for additional feedback for anyone who'd like to stop by and offer some input as to where they'd like to see the town move forward. And then on September 11th, the Groveland Day 5K will be held.
I might have missed it, the time on September 10th?
I believe it's at 10:00. Four?
10:00 to 4:00, yeah. 10 to 4, yeah.
10 to 4?
Yes, I'm just double checking, double checking. Yes, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on September 10th.
Thank you. All right, did it? Selectment's time. Kathy, do you have anything?
Yes, I mean, just, we opened school up today at Woody Ear for teachers only. So we all got back in there, and it's always, it's always kind of crazy when you get in there. And the end of the day, we sat down, and they bring in a speaker. And this particular year, though, the speaker actually, I think, was right spot on and spoke more about why you do a certain job, why do you want to teach? If you don't love it, if you don't love teaching to children, if you don't have a passion for it, then what are you doing? You know, so, you know, we all look for things to do, for jobs, things we want, that we feel that we're making a contribution. I like serving on the town boards in town, because for me, it's been a way to make a contribution. And, you know, it's not always, you don't always get the big thank you, but you still feel like, hey, I think I'm doing something good for my town. I have that passion. And it made me reflect and think about the fact that we have a newly hired town administrator who has an amazing passion and does not usually step up and take, what should I say? The praise that she deserves for the things that are being accomplished. But if you walk around the Town Hall, and you look around the downtown, and you talk to people about what's getting done in the town, I think the amount of passion that our town administrator brings to the job is incredible. And we're very fortunate to have her, and I just wanted to make sure I said that to you today. Thank you.
Jason, anything?
No, I don't have anything today.
Dan, you got anything?
Yeah, I had a couple, thanks.
Go ahead.
I think we talked about it a while back. Is there a committee on Center Street and brainstorming on what to do, not to do with that? Again, some citizens have asked me, why don't we sell some five lots there, or lease it out? So, you know, do something. We had, we had them playing, what do you call it, crooked over there? But, you know, are we going to do anything with that property, you know? Could we lease it out? Could we have, you know, a summer concert series? Could we have, you know, like, a hat shell over there, a big turtle shell or something, you know? You know, Blanding's Turtle Shell or something, you know, like, you know, Tanglewood Groveland Summer Concert Series. But, you know, I'm just, you know, trying to provoke some thought here. But it's been sitting dormant, you know, it's like it's locked up. Shouldn't have to break into it to use it. But, yeah, is there a committee on that? Can we get an update from them at some point in time? And appreciate that. And I know the rebuttal might be, well, you can go to the meetings. But I don't know if we have a timeline on that, or if we should. So that's just kind of a housekeeping thing for me. The other thing is, positive thing, I got out on Johnson Pond with my son about a week ago and went through what I call the muckrake area, the bottom of Nuns Hill. And it was nice. There was some swans there. If anyone hasn't seen the swans, they're pretty nice. We got swans on Johnson Pond, and I saw some geese, and I startled them, so sorry about that. But I saw them take off in flight from the lily pads, and that was pretty cool. I think they were Canadian geese or something. They had a ring around their neck. And I caught three fish, a couple of blue gills and a small mouth bass. So it was very pleasant out there, and if anyone hasn't experienced it, get yourself a canoe or a kayak, or get in touch with me, and maybe I'll lend you one of mine. But it's pretty nice, and it's a gem over there next to VC Park. And, you know, Mike's domain. It's nice over there, Mike. So, thank you.
Mike, can you, do you remember a committee form for down on Center Street? I don't either.
No, I don't think so.
So there's no committee formed, but that was the application that we put forward through the Community One-Stop for the feasibility study to actually have a consultant come in and give us an analysis of exactly what we could do there, what type of development, if any development could be there, what it would look like, what the market analysis would be, how it would be structured, how it would be divided, access, transportation. And so we hope we're successful, and we would hear from the program in September. And then we would have those funds, and a consultant would then begin that process. And that would also entail an engagement process to make sure that there's enough community buy-in to support whatever it is that their findings are.
Though we should have something within the month.
Hopefully, they'll make awards by the end of September, is what I'm told.
And then, at that point, we can put it on the agenda? Is that all right with you?
It's okay with me. I'm just, you know, just wondering what's going on sometimes. I don't know. And can I follow up on the canoes? Is it possible that we, you know, I saw the canoe and the kayak racks at the bottom of the hill? I mean, it's possible, I don't know if there's a liability issue, but can we have a couple of town canoes that we, you know? Like taking out a book out of the library for those that don't own one. I mean, I'm just trying to think here. I want to get people out on the water.
We have, we have a few canoes, but the racks are all full. There is one easy canoe there, so you go.
Go see Mike for a VC canoe.
Did you have a fishing license that day?
Oh, Jesus, you got to get me on that.
Mike, you got anything?
Just a couple of things I've been thinking about
Oh, man, that's long.
that we probably should address soon is, a couple of years ago, I remember somebody coming around looking at all the town buildings and doing a study on what needs the most work, and this and that. And, not that I'd like to keep announcing that I worked for the Highway Department for 10 years of my life, but I did. And they're buildings falling down, and that's another project that is going to be, we're going to have to do, and that's going to be a lot of money. And it's just something we need to kind of start thinking about now before it gets any worse. And it's just something that's been on my mind. Other than that, nothing.
That is actually on our capital plan that we're putting together. Rennie had mentioned that he was also worried about the walls and the way that the structure was. And so that is something you'll actually see in the capital plan that's being proposed this year.
I was just curious, so.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Old or unfinished business? I don't think we had anything there. Anybody? Go ahead.
Well, we made, we had that informal tri-town meeting. And we looked through the regional agreement, and I think that they dug up an old email from a school committee chair that invited all the towns to a meeting at one point. So they're looking to reimplement those kind of meetings. So this fall, I would expect, right, there should be a tri-town meeting before the budget gets put together, so we can all kind of talk about finances and where things are. So I thought that was productive, and, you know, the other two towns are looking through the wording as well. Some of the wording is a little vague, maybe, but, so there might be some proposals to go towards the spring town meeting for some wording to tighten things up here and there. But mainly, I think the main thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, was they really want to get the lines of communication open with the school committee members and the town boards, because they used to, we used to have joint meetings. We don't have them anymore, until it's too late, you know, until they vote a budget that no one can afford. So this year, at least, we're going to start, I think, with the fall town meeting, with a fall tri-town meeting of some kind. Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
I did just receive note that there is going to be a ribbon cutting for the Penticat School. And it is open on September 14th at 4:00 PM. And it's on the "We Are Penticat" page.
Mr. Chair, can I bring up something else?
Sure, go ahead.
So the PRSD has a new mascot, and I like it. It's a panther.
Yeah.
It's cool.
Yeah.
So I went on, you know, I asked Greg LeBrack, I said, hey, can I get a sweatshirt, you know, a jersey? And there aren't any. I couldn't find one anywhere, you know? You know? I wanted to wear my new, you know, panther shirt to the Board of Selectmen meeting. But if anyone knows where you get that, but it's just, yeah, strange.
Oh, I've seen a lot of them around. They wouldn't give you, they probably didn't like you.
Maybe that's possible, you know? I'm not very popular in this neck of woods. But, you know, maybe that can change. But we'll see. But, so they have ribbon cutting. Do they have a red carpet?
Ribbon cutting ceremony, September 14th, 4 o'clock, at the new school. Thank you. Other items not reasonably anticipated. I don't think we have anything there. Correspondence, executive session meeting minutes for February 15th, 2022. Executive session meeting minutes for February 28th, 2022. Executive session meeting minutes for March 14th, 2022. Executive session meeting minutes for March 28th, 2022. Executive session meeting minutes for May 19th, 2022. Meeting minutes for August 1st, 2022. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn next regularly scheduled meeting. The Board of Selectmen will be Monday, September 12th at 6:30. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And is there a second? Thank you, Mike. Motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment? Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Peace be with you.